So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Finance. Today is Tuesday, May 9th, 2020. And we will jump right into item one. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting held April 21st, 2020.
Jim Wright, so moved.
Chris Bay, a second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on the motion or on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed or abstentions? All right. I see Chrissy Anderson is still muted. Oh. There's Mark.
Oh, sorry. I got it.
Okay. So item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Safer Places Consultant, Steve Bukowski, Chief William Baldwin, Captain Bart Barone, and the purchasing agent to award the contract for surveillance camera system upgrade at the police department headquarters in the amount of $94,544.38 to Mammoth Security, Inc. of New Britain, and authorize the mayor to execute its act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of the contract to end its administration.
Chris Bay, so moved.
Anderson, second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any questions on the motion?
I do, Mayor. This is Lorene. Um, can you explain to us what Safer Places, the consulting firm, is that a contract that we have? Is that through a grant that we have that?
So, um, the, and I know that Alice is on with us as well. So the Safer Places consultant was actually brought in to assess the needs for security camera upgrades. The board may recall, I think it was maybe a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, we reserved in, did a capital reserve of $60,000 for the camera upgrades based on, on the, based on the consultant's evaluation. Then we went out to bid and Safer Places helped review the bid and make the recommendation.
And there was a, in the backup materials, there was talk, not talk, there was an explanation of labor costs having been omitted from, not, not purposefully, but, but omitted from the bid. That didn't have anything that could possibly cause the other bidders to have a question about the bidding process or the awarding of the bidding to, to this particular firm when they had left something out of their bid?
So, um, I'm not sure if the chief is on with us.
I think the difference was only $3,000.
Okay. I just, just if they were allowed to make a change and did that at all, could that at all cause a problem?
You know, I don't, I can't see if the chief or Captain Barone are on. If either the chief or Captain Barone are on, could you, could you unmute yourself and? Guess I'm not.
Mayor, this is Vic.
Yeah.
Discuss, we discussed that issue. And I, it was my opinion that it had, it made no difference with regard to the bidding. Those small mistakes happen quite often and they're able to be corrected. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that there's a problem there.
Okay. Thank you.
But it was, it was discussed.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments on the motion?
Just there's proposal B for the traffic barn. That wasn't voted to accept one way or?
So the additional cost for the traffic barn, as you know, as I indicated, the, the capital reserve for this particular project was $60,000. When they brought in the Safer Places consultants, that, that they expended $8,000 out of that account, leaving only $52,000 to cover the cost for this project. The, the way to cover this is to use what's left in that capital reserve and then we're going to borrow against one of the other capital reserve accounts with a repayment schedule over the next four years. We felt that it was too much to, to borrow the full amount for both the traffic barn and the headquarters. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Now, the plan is to get that traffic barn, get the security cameras installed at the traffic barn hopefully next year or the year after. Other questions or comments? All right. And I'll call the motion, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. All right. Item three, how entertain a motion to formally accept the establishment of Fund 0282 COVID-19 for the accounting of expenses and revenues related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
White and so moved.
Pesky. Second then.
So I have a. So I have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion?
So Mayor, I guess I'll just ask, I think we discussed this partially last night, maybe the week before. So this is just the, the account fund where all the COVID-related expenses are going to go, correct?
That is correct. So the thought here is instead of trying to charge all of those expenses to respective departments that are ordering the items, such as that plexiglass pieces or PPE, that we would account for all of those expenses through this one account. It makes it easier for us to track those expenses as we applied a FEMA for reimbursement. And I know that Alice is on the line. If she wanted to unmute herself and add any other explanation.
I guess while we're waiting for Alice, do overtime payments for, I know under the declaration of the emergency, you know, there's obviously some overtime costs with the police and fire departments for various events and various activities. Are those covered in that same fund or are those going to go somewhere else?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. I was too busy trying to unmute myself.
So I was just asking where, I know, you know, some material stuff and things we've had to buy pandemic-related, whether it's PPE or cleaning materials, whatever. What about the overtime-related costs to the pandemic between police, fire, et cetera?
All of those costs are being accounted for in that fund as well. As a matter of fact, when we initially ran into this pandemic, we set up a special pay codes within our payroll system to automatically move those costs to this special fund. I just wanted the Board of Finance to officially acknowledge that the fund existed and this is where we would be housing all of those expenses and any offsetting revenues that may come in related to those expenses.
Okay. Do we know where that fund is at?
On the city side at this point in time, we're at about $170,000. I, I do have some information from the Board of Ed, but I don't believe I have all of it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So this particular fund is just the city side? Is there any sharing with the Board of Ed?
The plan is to move all of the expenses related to the COVID, Board of Ed as well as city into this fund so that we can account for them and remove this anomaly from your general fund so you can get a clearer accounting of the costs related to this pandemic.
So these costs are not being charged against our current general fund budget?
That's correct. Not on the city side. The Board of Ed has been accounting for theirs in, in their general fund account. But the plan is to move them all into this COVID fund.
Other questions for Alice?
I'm wondering if, if we maybe see a report every 30 days or something on that, on that balance and where we're at. I don't know if anybody else is interested in that at this point. You know, maybe setting up a, you know, every 30 day, just how we get the monthly expenditure reports. Maybe just a report on this fund and where we're at with, with specifically COVID spending.
To be perfectly honest with you, I will say that we are working at this point in time, because this, this did come up all of a sudden, right? We are working at this point in time and reviewing all of our expenses to make sure that we capture anything related to COVID. So it's a work in progress at this point in time. A lot of work has gone into it. There will continue to be more work to pull it all together, but certainly have no issue with providing you with a report that can identify to you what those costs have been.
This is Christopher. Wouldn't that be reflected in the regular reports we've received? Or are we talking about a separate accounting just for this one?
It's a separate fund.
Yes. But wouldn't that fund also be included in the regular financial budget versus actual reports?
No. No, it's not a department. It's an actual fund outside of the general fund.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
You're welcome.
Is it, we made a mention this last night. Is the expected reimbursement 100% from FEMA? Do we know at this point?
The last communication I got was that we are anticipating that it would be 100% reimbursement of eligible expenses. And I think I mentioned to you last evening too. Sometimes what we consider eligible, they may not. I can't guarantee that it's 100% of whatever we expended. But based on the last communication I had, the expenses related to the response to the pandemic would be covered under FEMA. I'm not, I'm not going to say that any of the Board of Education costs are going to be covered under FEMA. We haven't gotten clarification on that at this point in time. There is CARES Act money that's coming in that is for education purposes, but we still need more clarification on all of it.
Other questions?
Or I know we're still waiting on Board of Ed for some of the things, but I'm expecting, we're not heating and cooling like we typically would. The facilities, the buildings. So are we expecting to see a positive on, on some of the, not cleaning, but the, the general care of the facility?
So I know that when the Board of Finance and the Board of Education met jointly and that question was posed, I think Mr. Arum had a list of some of the line items where he was experiencing surpluses. And then, of course, those line items where they were experiencing deficits. I'm thinking their food service line item in particular. As we continue to work through those budget projections for year ends, I think we'll have a clearer picture on what those, where those surpluses are and how best to recapture those surpluses so they benefit the Board of Education and the taxpayers as, you know, to the, to the greatest ability. I did reach out to the superintendent and the, and the business director last week to see if they had any, any more clarification. And they said that they were working on it, meeting with their, their full board tomorrow evening. So I expect over the next several weeks, you'll probably see more reported on all of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item four says discussion regarding the 2021 budgets. And just look this as a placeholder because obviously with the executive orders and the requirements for public access to these meetings, I just wanted to make sure that if there were any questions that the Board of Finance needed to ask me or any further insight the board wished to provide to me regarding the 2021 budget, this would be your opportunity to do so. I'll just re, recount what I heard from the board last night. The requests were for a budget analysis showing what the impact would be for the adopted budget at two and a half percent utilizing funds from fund balance, funds from the Internal Service Fund, and identifying any other resources that may be available to offset the impact. And I also heard from the board, more from the council, a direction that the Board of Finance asked the council to give me regarding reaching out to our unions, which I did meet with our HR department this morning to start that outreach. So is there anything else that the board is seeking before we get to that next level of budget adoption and mill rate?
What is our calendar going forward?
Who asked that? So, oh, Mark. Okay. Good. So going forward, I know this is, it's like a flurry of activity because we, we're running a couple of things on a parallel track here. So Thursday evening at five o'clock, that's the day after tomorrow. That's Thursday, the 21st. There's a joint meeting with the City Council and the Board of Finance to receive a presentation from the Board of Education on the THS construction project. Included in that presentation will be the cost of the project, keeping in mind that they're at the concept stage, although I think it's a pretty well-developed concept. So we'll go over the cost, go over the, the impact of borrowing, the, the amount that the state is not going to cover. I will have Sandra Dawson, who is our city bond counsel, and Bill Lindsay, who is our financial advisor, to do a presentation on what that borrowing impact will be. Our charter only allows for bonding for 20 years. So as you can imagine, a $70 million bond package financed over a 20-year period of time. I think it's, it's worth going through the, you know, the exercise of finding out what that impact is over, over the next 20 years. And then from there, Tuesday, the 26th, we were going to talk about a mill rate setting. But after hearing the boards and the city council's requests, we're looking to adjourn that meeting and reschedule it for Tuesday, June 2nd.
What time are you thinking of for that?
Because that would just be the Board of Finance. I'm certainly open to hearing what your interest in. Our traditional meetings are at five o'clock, if you want to keep it at five.
Is that the meeting we'll be setting the mill rate?
It is. Yes.
And questions prior to that? We can email you.
Absolutely.
And any, any additional information will also be emailed to us from you, Zachary.
Right. So if you want to keep that meeting on the 26th, you know, just so that we can look at the, you know, that, the analysis, you know, the, the two and a half percent with the use of fund balance and get an idea of where we are with that. We could certainly keep that meeting and continue that discussion more focused just the Board of Finance, focused on what those funding vehicles will be to offset the expense budget set that are presented or proposed.
Will you have enough information by then to kind of wrap things? Or just putting, or is that just going to be an interim kind of thing?
So I don't, by way of additional information, I mean, the revenues are what they are. I, we've gone through those revenues a couple of times. And the expense budgets are what they are. You know, obviously, if, if it's necessary to make additional cuts, as has been done historically, the Board of, the Board of Finance would dictate what those, you know, what the approved bottom line budget is. And then the direction would be to the respective departments, Board of Education and city, to find those cuts and bring back a finalized adopted budget. So I don't, I don't know that there's any more information that I can bring to you other than putting it into one document that shows you what the impact is and shows what that mill rate would be as a result of that. Or what additional cuts would be necessary so that there is no mill rate impact.
And Mayor, I'm thinking maybe we can do that at that 26th meeting after Memorial Day there. Maybe that's when we bring that spreadsheet in. So that way we have, you know, that following week to digest it, shoot back and forth any questions we have. And then we can move forward on, on June 2nd. I think I'm comfortable with, with that timeline.
Okay. I don't know how the, how the rest of the board feels. I'd need a quorum to have that meeting. So we would be looking at five o'clock on the 26th. That's again, just looking at the spreadsheets with any of those other revenue items. And then the actual mill rate, budget adaption mill rate would be June 2nd.
I'd prefer to have a meeting before the 2nd also.
Okay. So I hear two.
I'm available both evenings.
Okay. That's true.
Where's my?
Okay. All right. So that will be the 26th and then the 2nd. And I may need another meeting with the Board of Finance. That's, it's not in connection with the budget. I'll wait and we can go over that when we do the business by Mayor and members. So if there are no other questions or discussion on the 2021 budgets, I'm moving.
That, I don't need this right now, but could we get a clarification on the, as far as the Board of Ed, the operating budget they presented was 2.5% increase. But I'm a little unclear how much of an increase they're looking for on the capital budget. So if you could get that maybe by next Tuesday?
See your favorite spreadsheet? So the Board of Education itemized how they can get to 2.5. I don't think they actually took any official action yet to adapt that, those cuts.
For the capital portion?
The capital portion, they are right now at $1,515,200. That, as you know, is roughly 0.8 mil.
That, is that with capi, is that with technology?
That does include the technology. Yes.
Okay. That's the increase to the total budget?
Total capital budget, 1.5. The operating budget that, as it stands, without the 2.5, without the cuts, they haven't taken any official action to adopt those cuts yet. So as it stands right now, their budget was at $78,398,92. That's the operating. And the capital was at $1,515,200.
But if they, if they cut it down to 2.5 on the operating, what would that number be?
I, to get it to 2.5, I think they would have to reduce by $2,800,000 and change to get to $75,462,393. And then, as I said, that capital is still, as it stands, the $1,515,000. So when you put those two together, they're over the.
So we should see a reduction in that capital budget, right? As far as especially the technology with the additional revenue coming in, that $660,000?
I know that's a question to me. I'm, I guess, I guess the question to the Board of Finance is, you know, as you're deliberating what you are comfortable with adopting, the, the direction, and usually we do that in two bites. It's, you know, what you direct the Board of Education to, but what you approve for appropriation of the Board of Education for operating and what you approve for capital.
Is that 600, this is Lorene, is that $600-plus thousand? Doesn't have to be spent on technology. It, it's not.
It does have certain parameters, I know.
Oh, you are talking about the $660,000.
Right. From the CARES Act.
Right.
It, it, it's my understanding that it does have parameters.
Yeah.
But, but it isn't necessarily singularly technology.
I know that was one of the things, Ms. Pesky, that I saw in the paper because that money is related to having to switch to distance learning. That money is supposed to, from what I read, and I'll have to look into it. I'm sure the mayor has more on this as she digs into it. What I read was, you know, it's cost-related to moving to that distance learning because of shutdowns, et cetera. So one of the major pieces of that distance learning is purchasing that technology in order to do distance learning. That's what I got from the newspaper article. I mean, obviously.
Well, I'm just thinking about the, the bigger cities are receiving, you know, $9 million, et cetera. So I, I don't know that it, it can be totally focused on technology.
So I think.
Excuse me. Is that included in our revenues at this point though?
No. 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 That is, those are funds that would be separate and apart from general funds, so not part of our budget deliberations. And I do have, and I'll, and I'll email it to you. I was going to run across my office and pick it up. I do have some printed material, white paper, on what that, through the CARES Act, what those funds were designed to cover. So, and I, I'm going to be honest with you. I get a piece of paper on Monday and I get another piece of paper on Tuesday and I get another piece of paper on Wednesday. They, they're always, you know, clarifying or changing their position. So this is one of those items. I think that up until, up until the check is in the mail, I don't know that there's ever going to be clarification on what the expectations are. But I am absolutely clear that this is not general funds, funding money. And I don't think that will change. Nor should it.
But the, the computers that are coming from the state partnership, those will be here. I understand they're coming sooner than, than we were originally thought them to not be coming until July, but they'll perhaps be coming in June?
Yeah. I think you're saying I am. What I can do is have Board of Education provide us with written answers to these questions in advance of the June 2nd meeting just so that you have some idea of what additional resources may be available to them. You know, as we all know, we don't even know what education is going to look like in the fall. It's, you know, it's, it's a scary time for us. I can't imagine how the superintendent and the board feel trying to figure out what they need to meet any of those educational requirements in the fall. But we can certainly ask about, you know, the CARES Act funding. We can talk about those additional resources with laptops or Chromebooks or whatever else may be coming their way.
Is it CARES? Oh, good.
I was going to say, and in context, you know, how that may be able to supplement what their capital technology plans propose. able to supplement what their capital technology plans proposed. So I can certainly see if we can get some clarification in writing for you before then.
Yeah, I I have the Rep AM article here. I don't know if there's this one short paragraph saying the Commissioner said he wants the focus to be on using the money to make sure all students have access to technology and connectivity, high-quality curriculum, and social and emotional supports for educators.
Yes.
Anything?
And then transversely, in the next paragraph, it says funds cannot supplement operating expenses. So I think there's obviously probably more clarification that has to happen, but I think it is important in this budgeting process to know, you know, that those monies are coming in, and obviously, you know, it it should reduce that capital budget and the technology budget.
CARES money, that's that's for Board of Ed expenses.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, and I think for most of the Board of Finance members or former Board of Ed members, you know, supplement, not supplant, you know, is. Any other questions that you, or information you think you'll need?
Yeah, I do have have one. This is Lance, and Mr. Aaron said that he was going to go back to the transportation company and see if they can renegotiate some savings, because obviously the buses aren't aren't rolling. Get some clarification on how that went prior to the June 2nd?
Okay, I can. And I'll again ask them to do it in writing. I know we've had the conversation. I need to talk about it being a credit against a future invoice. So we can, we can certainly get clarification on how that would work.
Yeah, our last conversation, it was, he had reached out to him, but I don't think that meeting had happened yet.
Okay. All right. Typing your questions as you ask them. Are there, were there any other requests to the Board of Education that have not been filled yet? Board of Finance members requested additional information?
If you're going through, I did, in writing to the Chairwoman, Kepa Bianca, I did request that salary line item chart, operating versus alliance. I didn't receive it yet. I know, obviously, they've been super busy since then, so I don't expect them, that to be their top priority, but was hoping for that sometime this year.
So I'm sorry, that was requested with a breakdown of the, did you say?
Yep, salary line items, just like I requested previous years.
Okay. All right. All right. Anything else you think you need or? All right. Moving into item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Board of Education financial reports.
Second, Mark.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Questions or comments on the financial reports?
Yeah, I do have another question.
Go ahead.
This may have come under the last one we were talking about. If they could have a projection to year end, see if their, what their overall savings may be, if that's possible. By this second.
Sure. All right, any other questions on the acceptance of the financial reports? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item six. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, second of by Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then, let's see who we have by way of department heads on here. So Alice, is there anything else you needed to add this evening?
Excuse me, nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um. Anything from Corporation Council?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Dan Farley is on. Dan, was there anything you wanted to add this evening?
No, I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I can't, I don't see our, I don't think anyone else from the, from departments are here. I didn't see purchasing. So move into item seven. I'll entertain a motion to just consider business by Mayor and members of the Board of Finance.
Chris Bayes, I'm moved.
Thank you.
Point and second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Open. Ms. Pesky, anything this evening?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Wright?
I just reflecting on last night's meeting and the other meeting, the letters from the public. I don't get out much, so I don't get a lot of the public feed of what's their sense of the budget. So I appreciated the City Council members that told us where they stood, and I thought that was a little bit better reflection of the public. And I appreciate that, because I love that the fire people send us letters, education people. We all do that. I appreciate that they are supporting your budget, but I like to have a sense of what other people who don't write letters or don't come to meetings feel, and I was, felt a little bit that the City Council gave us that, to some extent.
Yeah. Admittedly, while we're getting a lot more participants on this call, and I can see there easily 30 participants, yeah. So what we're, what we're seeing is more participants are calling in and paying or listening, but the, we're still not, we're still not reaching out to the public for those comments to the greater scale. I did make it a point to ask the paper not to do the public notice as, you know, in the public notices pages on, in the register, excuse me, the newspapers, only because that is on page 15, and it's in a, you know, six-pitch font. So I was, I appreciated the fact that the Rep AM did put it in a larger article, but it didn't solicit the general public input. Maybe I can do a little bit more. We did receive a few more letters after last night's meeting. Maybe we could do a little bit more to let the public know where we stand with the budgets, as, you know, as it is now, because I do think the public only responds when they know what the impact is to their mill rate, not in favor of fanning flames. But, sorry, I don't think it's going well. Maybe we could do a little more outreach and do a public comment portion in the in the beginning of the next meeting, is the June 2nd meeting as well.
As as a kind of a follow-up to that, I think, once all this is is over and and we go back to having public meetings in person, they're all public, but in in person, a way to continue this kind of ability for the citizens and taxpayers of the city of Torrington to log in, to watch it. You you mentioned last night about the, when the Board of Ed was was on Cable 5. Lots of people watched, and that, that's, that is helpful, Jim, because then when you do go to the grocery store, people talk to you about it because they watched it, they saw it. And and they'll, they'll give, they'll for sure give you you their opinion in the in the grocery store.
They are more comfortable giving opinions face-to-face, that's for sure. Yeah, I think finding a way to livestream our meetings is, you know, is something that can be done, and we can certainly work on what that would look like. So, and so it was Mr. Wright that was speaking. Did you have anything else this evening?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Boynton?
Nothing new from last night.
Okay. Mr. Bushka?
Nothing new from last night or tonight.
Or next week or the week after. Christopher Anderson?
Only that I I'd reiterate my my call to attention on on restoring the funding for the volunteer fire department. I I know that's been a can we've been kicking, and and there've been a lot of cans we've been kicking, but I service that they will is not, should, I I hope it's not, yeah, the first thing. We have a little problem. If we could find an extra couple of thousand to throw their way, I think they do a lot with it, and anything that they can do to help us, I really appreciate it. Worth bringing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bayes?
Really nothing more. I I think that this process has gone well so far, and I think that a lot of people, you know, I have seen people, Jim, and going back to your comment, there there are a lot of people talking about it, and I think there's more people talking about the budget process this year than 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 even my first year doing this. So, you know, whether I I go anywhere, there's always somebody, I'm getting messages on Facebook, emails to my city email. There are people reaching out and talking about the process, so. Yeah, so I I think that this process has been as transparent as it possibly can be, and I I really enjoy the the public input of it, because it does drive, you know, what we should do. The taxpayers are the people we're responsible to. So at the end of the day, it's really important to have their input, especially to me.
Perhaps my problem is I don't get out, and my business is.
People, like I said, a lot more people are talking about it now. I've been in the store a couple of times, and even with a mask on, people still recognize you and 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 pull you aside about things. So, yeah, the people are talking about it.
But you need a bigger mask, is what you're telling me.
Exactly.
All right, so I guess that pretty much wraps it up for this evening. So Thursday at five o'clock, it's a presentation, the Board of Education, to the city on the Torrington High School building project. And again, I'll reiterate that we will have Bond Counsel Sandra Dawson and our Financial Advisor, Bill Lindsay, also doing presentation on financial impact. This, that's a process, by the way, that involves a number of action items that do get me a little bit concerned about the timeline. There are some steps that haven't taken place yet. We've got to get our Planning and Zoning Office to do an A24 meeting. We need our, not their office, excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then the Board of Finance would have to adopt a resolution, resolution and recommendation for appropriation and bond authorization. So it's really important. I know that there are members that are out of state and not able to participate, but this is really a big, important conversation, so if any of you can free up your schedule and participate remotely, it would be helpful. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
All right.
Good night.
Back to the beach.
Yeah, yeah.